Okay, we recessed our regular meeting of which we were in regular session. And now, I guess, we're going to continue the meeting that we recessed from, which is our regular monthly meeting. And so now, the floor is open for commissioners, as I understand it, to consider going back into executive session? Or is there some other business we've got on the way? Mr. Parker, is that where we are?
That's where we are, yes. I can read the reason again if you like.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1185, instructs a staffer or agency who are concerning the negotiation of the price and terms of contracts concerning the acquisition of real property.
Is there a motion? A motion? Is there a first second to go into executive session? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
To the members, we will go back into executive session. And I know we have one visitor this morning of which I think you've... We're out of executive session, back in regular session. The floor is now open for comments, suggestions, motions, whatever your pleasure is. Commissioners?
Okay. I would make a motion that the town go back to the seller of the peer property and ask for an extension of the due diligence and closing periods.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Can we make a little...
Discuss.
I need a little bit more clarification about that motion as to what you want those dates to be.
We'll discuss it.
Okay.
You had the floor, sir.
Okay. I think, based on the information we have, the lack of having a full inspection of the peer property, which would give us the information that I think is necessary to make a decision on how much it would cost to repair it, how much it would cost to keep it safe, is necessary before we go forward with this proposed purchase. At this point, the due diligence period is going to expire in two days. And I think it's incumbent upon us to get an extension of that due diligence period so that we can have the inspection completely done and we'll have a full and a much more full understanding of the entire cost of the purchase of the property and not just the purchase price.
Does the town manager have any estimate from ATM when there will be a more fuller report available? Because it doesn't make sense to set a date based on thinking if we have some information.
No, I don't.
Without that, I would be conservative and I would request a six-week extension. Without having any information, any specific information, if we had something, we could ask for one month, but at this point, I think we have to be more conservative. I'm open, I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of giving ourselves the leeway without knowing all the details of exactly what's been done and if everything is completed and just needs writing up, or if we're talking about still needing more investigation before writing up. Is there a way to contact ATM quickly and ask them if they have an estimate?
Counsel, could we ask that the due diligence date be extended to a period of two weeks beyond the completion of the final report from the inspection? Would that give us enough time to do what we have to do? And that way, up to, and we could give the buyer up to a maximum of 60 days. And that way, we could do it, the maximum of 60, but it could be done in three weeks.
I think in terms of contract terms, it needs to be a date certain.
Date certain, okay.
Somewhere in November should do it.
I'm sorry?
I said somewhere in November. Data, any idea when this whole report will be done?
Other than, other than telling ATM that time was of the essence and they needed to get it done and advising them of what our timelines are and their provision of these interim reports that are as evidence that they're working on it, I don't have an estimate of that. But they, I can tell you that ATM has been extremely responsive to us in the past and I have to rely on that they're working diligently to produce it. I am not able to say because, you know, they're gonna have it next Wednesday.
Put in the middle of the summer?
I, I think that it's realistic, if they don't have us a report in 30 days, that we don't need it.
So if November did this number...
Yeah, we're paying them $40,000 to do a report and...
Did these numbers be safe?
I didn't hear you really, I'm sorry. I think that's not the time to expect the report to be in and delivered to the board and for any type of deliberations the board may have.
You could potentially set it to that first week of December, that gives you two public meetings. That way, everyone has enough information for now time to deduct it, but, yeah, we did due diligence the week after our November meeting.
Thanksgiving week.
November 30th? Or you can move it back, and I think it's fair to say, if they're responsive, I think if time wasn't working against us, I believe we'd probably have this report by our October meeting. But again, I don't want to be too quick about it, but I suspect we'll have it in hand for the October meeting. But if you want to be cautious, pick it out at November meeting.
I agree with the conservative approach of giving us two meetings. We have to start somewhere with Mr. Bass. It would be better to start with the longer period request, but I think that allowing two, two Board of Commissioner meetings for this would be, would be a, an appropriately cautious approach timeline-wise.
So what is the suggested date then?
So our, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parker, that our meeting in November is 16? Yeah, that's right. Then you're running to Thanksgiving, but I think it's realistic that we're gonna have the report within a week or two. I would set it maybe the 19th, which is that Friday after our regular meeting on the 16th. I think that would give us adequate time.
So November 19th is the suggested date?
If that's the intent of the board to get their two meetings, give you a couple of days to discuss afterwards if possible, if you need to recess, but I think that's adequate time.
Okay, so, so then, I would amend the motion to extend the due diligence period until November 19th, 2021.
Was it made the second?
Second.
You didn't?
Yes.
And you agree, you agree to that? Okay. Further discussion?
Are we addressing the closing date separately?
We have to address the closing date as well. And then we need to talk about as well what to do with diligence if this is just a request, or if there's going to be additional funds, that depends on what is that offer to extend or we take it to Mr. Bass. I know we have a date, we can move forward with this today, we can move forward with additional earnings money, additional due diligence money.
Right now, we're talking about the dates, right? Can we vote on that?
What is the current, yeah, what is the current date for the due diligence to go?
Friday about a clock.
Friday this, this month?
And the motion on the floor is what date?
November 19th.
November 19th. So I'm asking you...
What's wrong with the last day of October?
The motion on the floor right now is the 19th.
The, the, the reason I'm asking for the 19th is because of all of the discussion we've just had and from the attorney's recommendation that we do it in the 19th so we have enough time to make sure that we have the report and we don't have to go back in case ATM hasn't given us the report that we're spending almost $50,000 for. And to be, and from the discussion that we had, it really doesn't make any difference to Mr. Bass because we're not going to be able to do the closing till the later one anyway, so. But whether we delay it for two weeks or two months, it really doesn't make any difference to Mr. Bass.
And what is the still proposed closing date?
Why don't you take care of this first and then we can discuss the closing date?
All in favor of the motion, say aye. I propose no. Okay. Counsel, are you, your suggestion to address the terms, is that...
If we want to address, yes, if it's requesting the due diligence at this point in time with the date, we can obviously go to and suggest a request for the due diligence extension. He can come back to us, but we also have to remember we're in this two-day timeframe, so I think he, we also have to set the closing date, so I think we need to put a timeframe on when this extension request has to be accepted. I think we need to put a timeline on it so that we have to eventually, the board decides to terminate, you know, time to do that.
Okay.
So we need to discuss, if you want to discuss with them with the date, if you want to put more money on the table, that's a board decision. But we also definitely have to address the closing date, that's the one term we have to...
So, I guess I would ask the same thing, after, after the closing of the due diligence, how much time do we need to actually make the decision on the purchase for the closing date?
The closing date from believing LGC timeline, we probably need to set it to the end of February.
Okay.
Just give us an example. But after that due diligence comes and goes, we are basically stating we're closing.
Okay.
So we would have, you know, November 19th, if we don't terminate or request another extension, we are locked into the deal.
Okay. It's fair enough.
So you're proposing a closing date of what?
March 1st.
Next year?
We cannot get LGC approval. If we're signing a contract, we have to have LGC approval. And if, obviously, that's setting us, we're not gonna get approval next week. So we have to go to February 1st to get that approval.
Do you have any idea when LGC?
Their calendars for '22 is not published yet, but it appears that they go with the first Tuesday, depending on holidays, but it varies. But again, their calendar is not published yet.
Generally, the first Tuesday is the exception.
That's what it looks like to me, generally the first, first, first Tuesday of the month.
Which that would be February 1st, it's about Tuesday. And we're probably need to get a week buffer to get their approval, get banking documents at once. And I'm assuming that they do go on the first Tuesday, which I think that's fair to say is an extra day, but the board decision, it definitely needs to go past 2/1 because we realistically, if you're going to sign a contract, you can close the board.
Okay.
Did I understand, Katie, that you said we needed to, to have a response time on this request that we're putting to Mr. Bass, since we only have two days?
So you are giving a request for the due diligence extension and closing date altogether. And it would be my suggestion to put a timeframe on it because by about a clock, if he decides not to accept this, then you guys have to make a decision about maybe four or five.
I think he needs to respond to us tomorrow.
Let's set a closing date first and then...
I wouldn't push you.
You can't go past...
Give him whatever time he needs.
Can't.
If you don't extend...
Our due diligence ends on Friday. Can we agree then the closing date, since Katie said we should do that first? I, I guess by motion?
Say your motion again, please.
Motion to extend the closing, or to define the closing date in the contract as the last day of February? Is that what we, is that what you had recommended, Katie?
As long as we get it past the first, I would recommend giving us at least a week after the first, assuming that's when LGC pays. So maybe Friday, the 11th, I think would be the soonest closing date, if you want to push it up to the end of the month, that's your...
Well, I, I'm just going through what we went, what we discussed when we came to the current agreement, and we were gonna meet the first week of October with LGC and we were gonna close the last day of October to give enough buffer, unless something has changed in terms of comfort level. It seems realistic to me to, to stick to that, the last day of the month? As long as it's not a weekend?
It's a 28th, it would be a Monday.
Is it better to close Friday? Is it better to close on a Friday than a Monday, or does it not make any difference?
I don't, from...
Logistics.
I don't think it matters, but I don't know about banking and...
All right, then, the last day of February.
A second, then.
Okay, any more discussion? Have a motion and a second. Who now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Get down, listen. Anything else about the peer?
Yes, we have to have the, the date certain for, for the response, and I think he's entitled to two weeks for that, so I would, I would say that's the 15th.
Hold on. We have to go say first argument date on Friday, whether Gil gives us the response or not, that due diligence date, if it goes without a response, or him saying this extension, you're locked into closing at the end of October. So we need a response for 5:00 on Friday from Mr. Bass, because if he says yes, great, we're moving on, but if he says no, then you guys have to elect to terminate the contract or move forward.
Right. But I, I'm, I'm thinking that we have the time period from the expiration of the due diligence date, which is two days, then we have till the end of October to terminate the contract, so whether...
No.
Once due diligence comes and goes, you are permitted to closing. If we do not close, we're in breach of contract. So due diligence is the fact of your mandate of making a decision to back out without any breach of contract, don't worry.
Okay. I got you.
Then we need a response from Mr. Bass tomorrow and what time tomorrow?
Yeah.
We're giving him as long as possible, we have it till Friday at 5:00. If you give him a buffer to Friday morning, I know he has other, he's not the only stakeholder. And you guys can automatically decide here today that if he denies the request, terminate, you go ahead and get that settled so that we don't have to come back. But in fairness to him, I know we're going in short timeframe, but give him as fresh time as possible.
I would sug, excuse me, I would suggest that we have the response by noon on Friday, which then would give us a, a period of time to decide what we would do if, if Mr. Bass declines our request.
That might be a suggestion. I don't, I would consider a, probably no motion, and a second to vote, to terminate in the event he does not agree to, to, to extend the due diligence or end what's in the closing date. Termination, according to what it said, doesn't mean you can't come back with the , for the contract after termination. But we don't want to be in a position, there, now, one call up in there, you know, Friday, we don't have authorization from the board, you can either move forward or terminate. So because of that, I would suggest that you make the decision to do that.
And we would set that in our, with our office meeting.
That's it.
I'm sure that's open to discussion.
It's what I think we need to do. I don't really think we have another option.
That's the recommendation, Rick.
It makes it clear what counts, stands on the due diligence period. And as Katie said, you know, I don't know whether Gil will be back with the request for more money, you know, I don't know. He may not.
He may not respond at all, that's why we need a...
Yeah. You know, no, no response, in my opinion, triggers termination.
So, I guess, I would, I would amend the motion to request a response by the end of business on Friday, and failure to receive a response would result in termination of the contract at that time.
Well, if we get a response that starts a renegotiation, you can't, you can't give him till 5:00 Friday because that, then there's nothing for us to, he's responded, but it's not a response that he accepts what we are requesting.
Well, then...
He needs to accept what we're requesting.
Okay.
I, I mean, if you're gonna give him until late Friday, he must accept what we're requesting.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just...
That's legitimate.
I, I think you do need to leave a little bit of time for respect in the counter.
Okay, so 12:00 on Friday is, okay.
Which means we need to be ready to assemble if there's going to be, right?
We, we need to have a special meeting on Friday evening to decide what we want to do if we get that decision.
We're gonna have to do it.
Do you guys want to recess?
We'll be recessing.
Yeah, we, we can recess and set a time.
We will have to get together midday.
Okay, I'll go for that.
Not, not evening, we have to get together right after that deadline to make any decision if there is a counter in the response.
We could recess till 1:00, give him till noon on Friday, recess till 1:00.
Okay.
12:15.
12:15, whatever.
Yeah. I'm trying to...
So am I.
So, so is the motion, okay? Make a motion?
Not, can you read that?
Well, I'll, it'll have to be rephrased, actually, so I might as well do it. So then we make a motion that we get a response from Mr. Bass by 12:00 noon on Friday, and that if the response is in a negative to our request, or requesting some kind of counter proposal, at that point, we will have a special meeting, and if it's a denial, we'll, we'll terminate the contract. I guess that's, that's, that's convoluted to the extreme.
But we can't, we can't do a special meeting, because today...
No, I'm sorry.
It's recessed.
You have to, you have to sign today if you're gonna recess, because you have to do a date time certain, so it can't be based on Mr. Bass. You guys have to come back in a year and if you're not gonna...
Okay, we'll, we'll schedule a special meeting.
After you do it, Tom, wait here.
What we need.
I, I think for simplicity, what we're trying to say here is to move that we request response from Mr. Bass by noon on Friday, no response will be taken as negative and the contract will be terminated. Is that, is that not what our attorneys have, have advised?
If that triggers automatic termination.
Yes. No, if he doesn't respond.
12:15.
That would be moving.
We offer it 12:00, we're recessing Friday, you might get terminated. If there's a response, if there's a response, if we're gonna have until 5:00.
We gotta have a meeting at 12:15 Friday.
If you don't set that on that situation, then we need to have...
We're gonna recess until 5:00. We're gonna recess until Friday.
So we're not, we're not taking no response as reason to terminate?
Either way, if there's a response, it's reasonable to just terminate, absolutely. But I still think we need to recess.
I, no, I agree, because again, I'm, I want, if there's a negotiation that has to happen, but we agree that no response is termination?
Nope. Nope.
I think we need a vote on the motion, then. There's, I, I made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Parker, would you read the motion back?
To request a response by Mr. Bass by noon Friday, and no response will be taken as a negative and the contract will be terminated.
You ready to go?
Yep. Well, we'll have a little discussion first. That, the, the motion that included the termination language was at the suggestion of our counsel. Our counsel has told us that that's what's going to best protect the town and the assets of the town. And so, I believe that based on our counsel, that that term should be included in the request, and it should be part of, of the request to Mr. Bass. And, and that way, Mr. Bass, again, I mean, if, if you look back at it, one of the reasons where, where we are now is we didn't get a signed contract from Mr. Bass for three weeks from the time it was given to him, which delayed our being able to hire, again, I requested that in July, that we have this inspection done. The inspection wasn't done because at that time, there was discussion, and we, the vote overruled having the inspection done until the signed contract was received. So again, we, we, our time to do all this was compressed, and I think without putting that language in there, then, then Mr. Bass may very well not respond either, and we're just gonna have to go through this exercise again and determine whether we should terminate the contract without having a response.
You've got a discussion. Are you now ready to go? Are you now ready, buddy? I think no response, please. Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no. You now, Madam Clerk. Counsel, are you ready to suggest anything else?
The board also needs to determine if they are considering, if you just want an extension without putting up the other money, if they have the option to, additional earnings money, or additional due diligence fees. And we talked a little bit about the difference, but, but, most if we close, go towards closing price. Due diligence money would be forfeited if we're selling a car at eleven nineteen closing date. So we already have twenty-five thousand dollars due diligence, um, that if we terminate, going to Gil, if we move forward, that's about the purchase price, and it's four hundred twenty. We would be entitled to get that back. If we terminate Friday, it would...
Misses?
What's your opinion on that? I mean, you, you, you bring it up.
We look at the legal counsel, bro.
You bring it up, you, you, you...
You know, I, I don't know your position, but if we're asking him to keep this off the market until eleven nineteen, I mean, that's something that if he just wanted to, he'd agree over these dates, but we set until Friday, and we talk about Monday then. But realistically, he's keeping the property under contract for another sixty-eight, if, before we make the decision with the order line. Right now, we have twenty-five thousand dollars earnings money, and then he has twenty-five thousand dollars due diligence money. So earnings money, we hold it on fresh account until closing. Due diligence money goes directly to Mr. Bass.
I think if I was a seller of this property, that, depending on what he says, by twelve o'clock on Friday, I would offer him some additional money, because we're asking him to keep it off the market. But we can talk about that Friday.
I agree.
I just need to advise the board that that consideration, should you desire to do that, that's going to require of, of, an appropriation to be made in order to comply with the Physical Control Act.
Okay.
Whatever the commissioners direct. What's your pledge, if you're talking, or what do you want to do?
Do we want to discuss releasing documents or not? We have, um, we have three items that are in hand now related to this purchase. There is an appraisal, there is an engineer's report on the pier building restaurant, and there is a town inspector's accompanying report on the pier building, um, restaurant that I believe should be made available to the public for, for their ability, so that they can look at it and understand, um, the nature of some of the, some of the details related to this purchase. So these could be put on the website, or they could be included in the October package. I, I, I have no preference how it happens.
I, I, I think that it should be both, that we've discussed the, the idea that most of the discussion we have here on this particular issue is the lack of information. And that lack of information, in, in a great part, is, is due to the open meeting law. We've had some discussions, we're coming down to the point where we can disclose certain documents. And I think that we should include it in the packet, and we know that only fifteen or twenty people come here, so that we should post it on the website under a heading of pier property proposals. And that way, more people will have the information and be able to look at it and analyze it themselves. So I, I would make a motion that we include the documents that were, were referred to in the packet for the next board of commissioners meeting, and we also post it on the town website under a pier, proposed pier property purchase. Say that three times fast, but...
Second.
Need more discussion? Everybody understand the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no. You now, Madam Clerk. Anything else?
Recess?
A resolution, you know.
So we're hoping to address the resolution that was passed on Tuesday, which is like a five years' week. Now that we have a new, new key component of that, we need to pass a new resolution for the oil cap. We had, um, part of several prepared a resolution removing the lift station upgrades that we thought are not pursued. I need to amend the resolution now to the pier property. So we need to pass that new resolution, which now would just be, um, the...
Before the reimbursement of the lift station that's already been constructed.
Yes.
So everyone got top of the, because we need a resolution, so we would have to renew section two A. We would also have to add, under the force thereof, not to proceed at this time, regarding the pier actual difference. And then inspection one, inspection two, we're not going to accept that double amount. Which would be, we're taking a, regular, pregnant, and now, and, and now.
I guess we're looking for a motion to approve this resolution subject to the amendments you just addressed.
Motion.
Mr. Brown made the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Smith seconded, any further discussion? Here now, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favors say no. You unanimously passed, Madam Clerk. Anything else?
Time of recess?
Say again?
The, the, the time specific for recess?
Do you, this is completely up to you guys. Do you, now that we're done at ten o'clock, I could put a special meeting up for twelve fifteen, so that way, if we don't want to meet, nobody could show up. But if we did the regular meeting, we kind of need to adjourn. So if we want to not recess, just adjourn this instead of special meeting for twelve fifteen, I have enough time to get that out, since it's ten o'clock. Completely up to the board, however you want to do it.
Whatever the...
I want a special meeting.
Fine.
And it would just be, I would put the per, the purpose would be to speak about the pier contract, if that works for everybody.
Okay.
All right, so we're recessing, not recessing. So we're going, we've got a special meeting at what time?
Twelve fifteen. Right.
Is it appropriate time to, uh, discuss what Q, or is that...
H meeting.
Does that need to be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Next regular meeting. Okay. I know we're going to have a motion coming up in just a minute to adjourn. I have been scheduled for over two weeks to leave town Thursday morning at daylight for several days. And the fact that I can't participate, and have not been participating, uh, in the discussion of the pier, and in fact, that there are registered certified mail going out stating that I am continuing to be the agent for the pier property, and that I continue to participate, which all of us in the room know that's not true, and also individuals spreading that information, which is not true, and the fact that I do not participate, and I will not participate in the meeting Friday, other than procedurally. So if I'm not here, it really doesn't make any difference, because Mr. Brown can run the meeting, and I can't talk or take action or participate anyway. If I'm not here, it's because I'll be out of the state. And that has been planned for an extended period of time. If the weather turns bad up north, I will be here, because my reservations and all will be canceled. But if it's nice up north, I'll be up north, as planned. So I'm just making it clear and concise, and hope for, hopefully, everyone that's listening and accusing me of participating, I hope this is another opportunity I'm taking to reaffirm that I'm not getting any commission out of this, I'm not discussing it, I'm not participating in it. And I certainly hope the minutes will reflect that, and I hope they are distributed to all organization members and individuals that are interested in the minutes of town of Holden Beach. And I think it's continuing to be unfair to put this false information, not only about me, but also some of the commissioners here, uh, on this board. And, uh, there's just so much misinformation out there, and so confusing to the public. It's very infuriating that we are here now, we have spent two more hours here this morning, and, um, I, I, it's just, this is a frustrating event, whichever way it's going to go. I know everybody in the room here, and everybody's listening, wants to do what's right and be fair, make good decisions, but it certainly does not help whenever people are sending out false information and knowing that it's false information. And, um, it's just sad. But anyway, with that having been said, is there a motion that we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.